Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us this morning for the monthly meeting of the Global Metro Air Pollution Control Board. I will ask for your patience as we get everyone in place and ready to begin. I will call the meeting to order in just a few minutes. Mr. Purdon, Ms. Gerdt, are we ready to begin the board meeting?
Yes, Chairman Holland.
Thank you. I will now call the irregular meeting of the Global Metro Air Pollution Control Board to order. We are conducting the meeting today by video teleconference and in person at the Edison Center. The first thing we have on the agenda this morning is if we have a quorum. I will conduct a roll call of board members that are present on this teleconference. When I call your name, please say yes. Dr. Colbert?
Yes.
Dr. May? Candace White?
Yes.
Thank you. Marissa O'Neil?
Thank you.
Sitting around?
I understand.
Okay. Dr. George?
Yes.
And Steve South?
Yes.
Got everyone. Okay. First thing we have on the agenda this morning, do we have any introductions this morning?
Morning, everyone. Hoping that you all can still hear me. I'm frozen up a bit.
We can.
We can.
Great. Okay, my apologies, everyone. There are no introductions today.
Okay, thank you. What about public recognitions this morning, Mrs. Hamilton?
I do have some public recognitions this morning. Thank you, Chairman Hilton. First, these district staff deserve recognition for their dedicated service. Five years, Kevin Clusta, Andy Purdon, Laura Wilson, Marty Hazlitt. Fifteen years, Naratip Chitradon, Shannon Hosey, Randy Shane Bachler. Twenty years, Billy DeWitt, Air Monitoring Manager. Twenty-five years, Dee Lynch, Community Outreach Coordinator. Please join me in recognizing each of these outstanding air quality professionals for reaching these significant milestones. Second, oh, I have more today, Mr. Chairman. It's a big week. Second, while next week includes Administrative Professionals Day, I'd like to recognize staff today who are key to the district's air quality mission and to the board for your work as well. Sherry Steiner, Executive Assistant, Andy Purdon, Info Systems Analyst, Kevin Clusta, APCD Records Coordinator, Donna Anthony, Management Assistant, and Monica Little, Administrative Coordinator. Finally, I'd like to recognize Byron Gary, who will be leaving the district on Friday to join the Kentucky Resources Council as an attorney, where we understand he'll be tasked with making good trouble. While we're pretty sure our paths will likely cross in the future, we will miss you, Byron. Our loss, though, is the environment's gain. And with that, Chairman Hilton, I turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations all the person that she acknowledged. And also, I'd like to, on behalf of the board, like to thank Byron for all your help for the board and interpretation of the regulations and ease of the some of the situations, questions that we have for you. You always get back to the board members in a very timely manner. So on behalf of the board, I wish you much success and good luck in your new job assignment.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the privilege of being able to serve the board these past several years in the district, these past eight and a half years. It's been an honor.
Thank you very much. We will miss you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
Well, I would just second that. Byron has been a pleasure working with you. Great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments regarding the public hearing that was held on February the 9th, 2023? Here or none? The minutes are stand approved. We also have the regular meeting minutes of the March 16th board meeting. Are there any questions, upgrades, or corrections to the minutes? Here or none? The board minutes stand approved. Thank you very much. Next thing on the agenda, public comment. Do we have anybody listed for a public comment this morning?
Nobody has registered here, Chairman.
Thank you. No unfinished business this morning? No scheduled new business? Committee reports, I don't think the committee's met in the last month.
No, Chairman.
Thank you. Staff report, Mrs. Hamilton?
Thank you very much, Chairman Hilton, and good morning, everyone. This morning, I'm joining you from Chicago, where several of us are attending U.S. EPA's National Air Toxics Conference, and more about that in a bit. The district is happily celebrating Earth Week this week with a special event each day, including a salad pitch-in after this meeting, a guided Central Park Earth Walk, a Go 365 Walking Challenge, and a Central Park Amphitheater Beautification Project for the Mayor's Give-a-Day. Our thanks to the district's Social Committee and Rachel Smith, Administrative Manager, for the awesome arrangements. As part of our celebration, the district has also participated in Tree Fest, which was last Saturday, and we will participate in the Party for the Planet at the Louisville Zoo on April 30th, where at each of these events, we're highlighting our outreach programs, care, long care for cleaner air, grow more, mow less, all of which provide information about air quality and assistance to our community to reduce air pollution. I am very happy to report that yesterday, U.S. EPA proposed to find the Louisville area in attainment of the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for ground-level ozone. As you know, the district and the Kentucky Division for Air Quality submitted a redesignation request in September 2022 based on air monitoring data collected from 2019 through 2021, and, pardon me, more recent data continued to show the area meeting the standard. The public comment period for this proposed action will end on May 18th. EPA will then issue their final decision after the end of the public comment period. I do have to say, it's especially gratifying to see this proposal in print. It's been a really long time coming from EPA. Byron Gary, along with Craig Butler, our Environmental Coordinator, air monitoring program planning emissions inventory staff, and a host of others were instrumental in developing this proposal. And my thanks to everyone. We will keep the board up to date as we move through EPA's approval process. We certainly hope to see that approval soon this summer. To help the board, as we look for the person to fill Byron's spot as Regulatory Coordinator, Michelle King has graciously offered to serve the board as interim Secretary Treasurer. So till we do find that new replacement, plan on seeing emails from Ms. King with board materials. Additionally, as specified in Regulation 1.19, Ms. King will now receive petitions for administrative hearing from parties appealing final decisions of the board or the district. And as a reminder, the right to request an administrative hearing is limited to a period of 30 days when the person has had actual notice or could reasonably have had notice of the order or action, including the district's issuance of permits. Once filed, please be mindful that Regulation 1.19 in Section 9.5 specifies that there shall be no communication concerning the merits of a proceeding between a party to the proceeding, a person interested in the proceeding, or the representative of a party or interested person and a board member. You all have a special role to play, and for that reason, questions regarding case status or procedural issues are to be addressed to the Secretary Treasurer. Get that open. Last night, Ms. King, from Chicago also, was joined by Dr. Rochelle Duval of EPA's Office of Research and Development for a presentation to the West Jefferson County Community Task Force on the next phase of EPA's odor research in Louisville. This new work builds on EPA's previous work by coupling their Odor Explorer app with a remotely operated canister sampler, or a ROCS, that can be remotely triggered by text or out data and will allow for a sample of volatile organic compounds to be collected. Sampling in real time when people are observing an odor, we hope, of course, will help us identify those emissions that may be the source of that odor problem. EPA is going to begin testing the ROCS systems locally, and I'm very grateful that several community members have already signed up last night to help EPA with testing that system. Michelle, I see you're on the call. Is there anything more you'd like to add on that?
No, I think you covered it well. We're excited to be partnering still with EPA on this work and really thankful to the West Jefferson County Community Task Force for giving us an opportunity to speak with our community and find some volunteers that are interested in helping this work.
Thank you. All right, now on to air toxics. So EPA's Office of Air Quality Planning and Standards is hosting this National Air Toxics Conference, and this is the first one in 17 years. Air toxics risk assessment and communication has really evolved over those years, and important emerging issues have been identified that require the combined efforts of the federal government, state, local, and tribal air quality and air toxics and air regulatory professionals. After 17 years, you can imagine, there is a lot to talk about. So EPA planned three separate in-person tracks for the conference, focusing on risk communication, risk assessment, and new tools, including risk models, technologies like the SPOD Next Generation Emissions Measurement systems that were installed in and around Rubber Town as part of EPA's RARE project, and newly proposed air toxics rules. As a result, Ms. King and Matt King, Environmental Engineering Manager, have joined me here so that we don't miss a presentation. Several of the planned presentations focus on ethylene oxide, a new and emerging contaminant, and on EPA's newly proposed New Source Performance Standards for the Synthetic Organic Chemical Manufacturing Industry and National Emissions Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants for the Synthetic Organic Chemical Manufacturing Industry and Group 1 and 2 Polymers and Resins Industry. That's a really big title, so I'm going to call it by its nickname, the Hazardous Organic NESHAP, or the HON for short. I usually try to avoid those acronyms, but please bear with me, that title is only slightly less clunky than the actual proposal, which in its current form, it's not been published in the Federal Register. It's 440 pages in its prepublication form. It is a whopper of a regulation, and the proposal focuses on sources that emit six chemicals: ethylene oxide, chloroprene, vinyl chloride, ethylene dichloride, benzene, and 1-3 butadiene, and it requires some sources, among other things, to conduct fence-line monitoring. It's our understanding that EPA plans a 60-day public comment period that will begin when their proposal is formally published in the Federal Register. We expect that to happen in the next few days. In the meantime, a cross-functional group of permitting, compliance, air monitoring, and program planning staff are reviewing the proposal, and we will be prepared to share with the board at its May meeting specifics about the proposal and how it may apply to sources in Louisville. Are there any questions about my report at this point?
Mrs. Hamilton, of those six compounds, I think we only have three of those in Rubber Town. Is that true?
So with those, there may be, we do not have any emissions of ethylene oxide nor chloroprene.
Chloroprene, yeah.
Yeah, and I do have to say that, you know, right now, this National Air Toxics Conference is incredibly timely. This rule that EPA has proposed is focused on those emissions in particular, and especially within an area in Texas and in Louisiana, but there will be benefits to areas like ours, where we have industrial complexes that do use other chemicals covered by this rule. EPA has identified that there are four sources in Louisville that may be subject to this rule, and again, it is a big regulatory proposal. It's not one single national emission standard for hazardous air pollutant or a single new source performance standard. It is a brand-new proposal focusing on fence-line monitoring and then revisions to several of our most important new source performance standards and NESHAPs. So it is very complex, and we'll want to be sure that we understand the proposal, and again, how that may apply to sources in Louisville, and we will share that with the board when we come together in May. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on. This morning, staff from the district will be reporting on the recently completed air toxics monitoring report, July 2020 to June 2021. As everyone gets ready to join me in this presentation, I'd really like to recognize Billy DeWitt for his leadership early in this process. When knowing that the district would be required to install an Auto GC system at Cannon's Lane to monitor for photochemically reactive compounds, he recommended that we purchase and install a second Auto GC system to monitor many of those same compounds in Rubber Town where they are directly emitted, and equally as important, provide near-real-time air toxics monitoring data for the community, since many of those photochemically reactive compounds are also air toxics of concern that were identified in the West Louisville Air Toxic Study and are regulated under the STAR program. This early work has led to the district becoming the first program in the nation using an Auto GC to focus on air toxics, and it also led to our collaboration with U.S. EPA's Office of Research and Development on their RARE projects, which are ongoing. We'll talk a little bit more about some of the RARE projects next month when we look at EPA's HON proposal. But I also want to share my thanks for these people as well. I really want to thank Keith Tally for trusting us in 2015 when we went to him and told him we were going to do this. I want to thank Ms. King for her continued work to coordinate, communicate, and develop research projects with EPA to benefit our community and improve air quality. Andrea Cooley, APCD Environmental Chemist, and Brian Paris, APCD Data Analyst and Air Toxic Supervisors deserve praise for their efforts in standing up this new equipment and essentially developing this new application to monitor air toxics, and also for their expertise and patience in developing the quality assurance protocols and processes to provide valid data. Their work has benefited all the other users of this Auto GC system nationally in the photochemically reactive work under PAMS, and I know that not only do I have a great deal of praise for them, but I hear it and am hearing it here at this conference as well for their efforts. And finally, to Matt Mudd for preparing the report in clear and easy-to-understand terms. With that, are we ready to provide the slideshow?
Pulling it up now.
Thank you so much. All right, I think we can go to the first slide. This project is extremely important for the district for a number of reasons, some of which I've already explained. It's important because it allows us to understand the source of photochemically reactive emissions in comparison to our required photochemical assessment monitoring at our N-COR site at Cannon's Lane, because it provides information to our community in near-real time and to the board, and because it provides information to the district about how our STAR program is operating, and also how we, as air quality professionals, can use this information to strengthen and improve our program. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the next presenter.
Hello, Billy DeWitt, Air Monitoring Program Manager with APCD, and just want to give you some background on the genesis of our air toxics monitoring project. It all began with some regulatory changes that EPA made in 2014 to the ozone National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and this required some changes in the way that photochemical assessment monitoring stations were located and designed, and those are the stations that monitor volatile organic compounds that are precursors of ozone. And as part of this reassessment, EPA required these PAMS measurements to be co-located with existing N-COR or national core sites in areas with a population of 1 million or more irrespective of our NAC status and ozone. And so APCD had one of these N-COR sites established in 2009 and 10, and so we were mandated to begin monitoring for PAMS according to this rule. This rule also required hourly volatile organic compound measurements as opposed to the classic canister with averaging period. Those previous PAMS or air toxic monitoring projects that captured a snapshot of the air in intervals that depended on setting out the canisters and then an evacuated canister and then pulling in a known amount of air and usually averaging that over 24-hour period. That canister would then be taken back to the lab, the Auto GC mass spec unit, and be analyzed there. And that's a tried-and-true method, but it means that short-term spikes were not measured, and so EPA wanted to refine temporal resolution on that. So they began, as part of this PAMS reengineering, EPA, that is laboratory evaluation of eight of these Auto GC units in the spring of 2014. They whittled that down to a field evaluation of six units in 2015, and by the end of that project, there were really only three units that passed all the measurement quality objectives that EPA was looking for, and so without officially endorsing those units, it was made clear that those three were kind of the winners of this Auto GC shootout, so to speak. The University of Louisville was performing air toxic study via the canister method through 2013, and this was skinned into a loss of funding, and so we viewed the auto gas chromatograph technology as a potential to continue collecting data and get some of that hourly concentration data. We already knew that we were required to implement one of these systems for PAMS program at a later date. I know there's a lot of small pics there. That's a list of just all facilities in that Rubber Town main complex, and so when we were looking to locate the Auto GC, we looked at the West Louisville Air Toxic Study locations. We looked at the University of Louisville Toxic Study locations, and of course, we have an existing monitoring site on Algonquin Parkway, which is just northeast of the main complex, and that's directly downwind of the predominant wind direction, and so it was deemed a maximum cumulative concentration area for all the chemicals moving downwind of the complex. And it was also noted as such during the University of Louisville study and the WLETS study.
That's the first time we've had a margin of Algonquin drive, I think, yes, man?
Well, the canister samples were also taken there during the West Louisville study and the University of Louisville study, but it's the first, it's the first hourly concentration for VOCs we've had. When we were looking at what to measure, initially look at with the Auto GC, we took the VOCs of concern from the original West Louisville air toxic study and wanted to continue measuring those as the University of Louisville had done, and we also looked at emission inventory of a number of known ozone precursors that were reactive in the area. And not only that, we went ahead and added all the PAMS compounds that were going to be required at our PAMS site, so it was incredibly ambitious, to say the least. That's well over 60 compounds that we were trying to look for with this unit as opposed to criteria pollutant network where an analyzer looks generally for just one compound. So we knew a lot of work was ahead of us with that, with that project, and I think with that, I'll pass it on to the real meat.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Andrea Cooley, Air Monitoring Kings of the District, and I'm going to cover kind of how the Auto GC actually works. So the real advantage of an automated gas chromatograph is that it's field deployable, and its job is to collect and detect volatile organic compounds in gaseous samples, and this is all done independently of an operator. So 24 hours a day, seven days a week, the Auto GC is collecting gaseous samples. Every hour that happens, a sample is collected, and it does that by following a preprogrammed sequence of methods. One of those methods might tell the Auto GC, hey, collect an ambient sample, and then in the next hour, it might be quality control sample, and that could be a zero blank, where we want to assess the cleanliness of the system, or it could be a standard where it's analyzing a set of known VOCs at known concentrations, and those standards are then used to help us verify and validate the data that we're seeing in the ambient. So over a 24-hour period, 20 to 21 hours, the Auto GC is collecting an ambient sample, and the remaining three to four hours, it's collecting one of those quality control samples.
Is that random?
No, it is preprogrammed, and it just follows that same sequence and cycle.
For several, I mean, continually?
And regardless of whether it's an ambient sample or quality control sample, the sample actually gets split and goes to two different locations in the Auto GC system. When it is split, it is trapped, so a collected sample is being trapped over a sampling period. Once we have those samples trapped, it's time to analyze them. So from the traps, those samples are released to two analyzers, and those two analyzers are actually two gas chromatographs. So within the whole Auto GC system, there's actually two GCs. One of those is designed to analyze the lighter, more volatile VOCs, and the other is designed to analyze the heavier, less volatile VOCs. The system is capable of detecting hundreds of VOCs, and so we have those two components to help give us better data on the whole range of potential toxins. So what the Auto GC actually does, or what a gas chromatograph actually does, is separate VOCs from one another so that you're actually getting an individual signal for each VOC. That's ideally what you want to have. Rather than having like, you know, with the SPODs, for example, you get a total VOC signal. With this, you get a signal for each unique VOC, and what that signal looks like is a peak. If we go to the next slide, Byron, please. This is an example of raw data received from the Auto GC, and it happens to be a standard one. So these are, we know what to expect in this particular run, and this is a set of VOCs that are ozone precursors, but some of them are also part of the toxics, so benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, styrene, we're also in there. What we have on the X-axis, or the bottom axis there, is analysis time, and so remember, we collect and hold that sample and then release it for analysis. When that analysis starts, a clock also starts, and so what the GC And so what the GC does is assign a time in which each peak is detected. And that becomes the unique thing to identify what we're seeing in our samples. So benzene, for example, has a detection time of 600 seconds. So we would expect in every run, for benzene's time to be the same, whether it's a standard or ambient. So the ones on the left, that's the beginning, that's the zero second mark, those are the ones to be detected first. And then the ones on the right are detected last. The Y-axis, sorry, did you?
That gets a little great.
Sure.
Look at those peaks. So in other words, what you said, each compound has its own fingerprint. Is there any interference or, or any compounds that's pretty close that is?
Sure. And, yeah, and that's part of the challenge with this. And you can even see, even on a standard run where it's a limited number of VOCs, it may be hard to tell here, but some of them are being detected very close, they're delicate. So the, the vertical or Y-axis, that's the intensity of the peak. But what really matters in terms of calculating the concentration is the area of each peak. That's what gives us the concentration. So up until this point, now we've collected a sample, trapped it, analyzed it and detected it, assigned, identified the peak based on its time, and then calculated a concentration based on its area. All of that has been done in an automated way, with no operator needed. Once the data is collected, though, that's where our more extensive reviews come in. And I start with a standard run like this. Make sure that each peak that we're interested in, so we've selected, you know, a set of VOCs, although it can detect hundreds, we're more interested in, it was a subset of that. So make sure those peaks are properly identified. And then use that standard line, kind of like a template, where we can overlay the ambient runs and use what we know from the standard to help us identify what's actually in the ambient data.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can't read the bottom scale there.
Yes.
So could you tell us for that horizontal axis, how much time?
How long it is? So for this particular, so this was the heavies, this is an analysis of the heavier VOCs. That analysis time is about 36 minutes.
So calculate the area. I assume the time resolution is, one second?
More like 10.
More like 10 seconds?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And it depends.
On those peaks, you know. Typically, how many seconds width there is for these peaks? Some of them appear to be thicker than others. What's the typical time?
And that's what I was saying about the 10s. Maybe I misunderstood your first question. The width of the peak is typically around.
Typically around the 10s.
And, and that may be a little wide.
Yeah, but you have readings. That's the width of the peak. You have readings in between. It's the intensity. But you're going to take the area of the curve.
Right.
So it's continuous reading?
Well, it's, I assume it's reported every second or every 100 milliseconds or something, that's what the resolution is.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so the sample is collected over 40 minutes and then released for analysis. And so that's what this looks like. So you're really just for, for one hour, whatever the area under the peak is, and then therefore the concentration, that's your hour of use.
But that thing is reading continuously, like versus every?
Well, it's reading continuously, but peaks, it's a data acquisition system which records values in, in every certain interval, otherwise there are 10, but a number of readings, so that's what I'm asking.
You get an hour. Different from like in the criteria world where it's minute resolution. We get a reading actually every minute? This is just every hour? Maybe I'm not.
I guess what I'm asking is how do you calculate the area under the curve? If you would expand that out, that curve, instead of a peak?
Right. The software does it.
The software does that?
Yeah.
So in this curve, it's like this.
Right.
There would be a number of screen readings along, you know, taken every so long. Not, not an hour, 10 seconds, some. Say if, say if the width of that peak is, is 10 seconds, there's a number of readings in that 10-second period. So then you can use the values to calculate the area under the.
So the, the area under the curve is, the whole area under the curve is representing the concentration for that VOC in that. Right?
Yeah.
So as long as, you know, that, that total area represents a single VOC, we don't, you know, we don't really, we don't pay attention, we're not calculating anything that's happening across that.
What I think, what he's asking, how many data points are on that curve?
Oh.
In essence, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Another way of putting it.
I believe it's the total number of ions detected by the.
It's a 40-minute sample.
The flame burns the chemical and then it detects a certain number of ions and that's what that curve looks like.
Will we know?
We can, we can have a pause. Yes.
You got all these engineers in here, so.
That's okay. We can, we can follow up too. Let's see, where was it? Byron, can you flip to the next slide for me, for some, just to.
I have a roll the question. Do you save all this as archive, right, in case another chemical becomes a chemical of interest or a compound of interest?
Yes, yeah, all the raw data is.
I'm questioning, because you're working it. By these standards, for each one of these compounds that you are trying to measure, these are standard samples that you put in the, to calibrate them, right?
Yes, and it's a mixture. So like one.
What about this Fisher sample, or what?
Air, gas, in the past EPA has supplied them for it.
Right.
Yes. And it's a mixture.
Okay.
Okay, so I think I had said, you know, we, we use the standard as kind of the template to help us identify what we're seeing in the ambient data. Okay, so.
We won't be able to understand that.
There we go. Sorry.
That's okay. So it's not, we're not only just getting the identity of the peak, but also that concentration. And so we would, okay, and so if we look at just the standard, this is a controlled sample. Same VOC, same concentrations each time. But ambient is very, ambient air is very dynamic. We see different concentrations hour to hour. We see a different set of VOCs from one hour to the next. And so if we would zoom in on one of those compounds, and this is part of the review process, zoom in and just make sure there's not any of those other interfering VOCs, things that we're not necessarily interested in knowing concentrations for, but may be interfering with the actual calculated concentration of the one we do care of. And so because this happens, and for some of the VOCs we're really interested in, it happens routinely, we came up with a way to communicate both internally with the board and with the public, how confident we are in the data being produced by the Auto GC. And so we call that our data quality scoring system. And I'm just going to summarize what the color coding one means. So if we assign green to one of the VOCs of interest, that just means we have high confidence in the data being produced by the Auto GC. So both of those criteria are being met well, that the peak is properly identified. And then we are confident that the, the concentration being calculated is correct. Okay, so those will be assigned. When they're assigned yellow, our confidence is a little less. And we're just saying, with these results, exercise a little bit of caution when interpreting them. It could be biased high or low because most likely there's an interfering VOC with the, with the results, interfering with the results of the VOC we actually are interested in. For red data quality scores, we assign those to VOCs where the data produced by the Auto GC, we really have little to no confidence in. And that is generally because we may be able to identify them in the standard, but when we start looking at the ambient data, there's just so much being detected at the same time that we really can't confidently identify where that one we care about is, or maybe it's buried under some other more prevalent VOC. So if we look at, next slide, please, the time period for the air toxics report, July 2020 to June 2021. This is a summary of what the data quality scores were at that time for the 15 APCD target compounds in that report. The raw data quality score, what that means is, before any review has been done, the result that the Auto GC provides, how confident are we in that result? The post-data quality score is after I've done my review, then how confident are we in those results? Most of the ones at this time period from the target compound list were yellow. And that is because there are other interfering VOCs with many of those. So with those results, you know, you just consider that they could be biased. 1-4 diclobenzene was a significant system contaminant during this time period. A lot of these toxic VOCs are really sticky and they tend to linger in the Auto GC system for a while after they've been analyzed. And that's problematic because rather than collecting data that's representative of ambient air, you're actually just recording what the system is contaminated. And so we assigned a red data quality score to 1-4 diclobenzene for that reason. Both acrylonitrile and carbon tetra chloride were particularly difficult to identify because of some of those unidentified VOCs. So they also are given red. But data quality scores can evolve as we learn more, as we make modifications to the system. And so if we move forward to, next slide, please, to our current data quality scores and our current data confidence, you can see several of the compounds have turned from yellow to green. And 1-4 diclobenzene has turned from red to yellow. And the reason for that was we reduced the frequency that the toxic cylinder was being analyzed without sacrificing being able to quality assure data, but reducing that system contamination. And so now we can feel more confident that the values we're measuring are actually representative of ambient air rather than just system contamination. You'll notice that acrylonitrile and carbon tetra chloride, remember before, those were the ones that were red. Because we have such high confidence in those compounds, we're no longer collecting data on those two VOCs. Thank you. But because they are still present in the standard, I'm still doing a qualitative check for any spikes that may show up where I would expect to see carbon tetra chloride or acrylonitrile. And if those spikes would occur, then that would get reported up the chain. And my final slide, you know, where can you access Auto GC VOC data if you want to see it? So one place is the Louisville Mirror Watch website where hourly concentrations of select VOCs are shown. There's a little bit of a time delay because remember, it's collect the sample, analyze the sample. And so it's probably three hours before we'll actually see those hourly concentrations on the website when it is properly working. The air toxics report that you just received is another place where our VOC data has been reported and it is on our website. That shows the annual averages of select VOCs from that July 2020 to June 2021 time period. The hourly VOC concentrations for those compounds plus many more that the Algonquin Auto GC collected during the same type, time period have now been reported to EPA's air quality system database. So those are. Of course, you've been receiving monthly board reports that show monthly averages of select VOCs. And the ones you have received so far include September 2020 to July 2021 and August to December of last year. So why is there that gap? Why are you missing August 21 to July 22? And the reason is, at the end of last year, when we were reevaluating, how can we produce quality assured VOC data in a more timely and efficient manner? And we kind of revamped how I was reviewing the data, but then also decided that it would make sense to provide not only internally to, say, our compliance department, but also to the board and to the community, more recently collected Auto GC data. Rather than looking way back, try to keep up with what's coming in in a more timely manner. So with that, though, there's still that backlog of about a year's worth of VOC data. Time and resources permitted will get reviewed. Something to look forward to. In the not-too-distant future, you will start to see Cannon's Lane Auto GC data show up on the monthly board reports. Up until now, it's only been GC data from the Algonquin Parkway site. Today, you received December of last year. We'll get January of this year, and then we'll get the February. That's when you'll see that comparison. So stay tuned for that. And if it's okay, I'm going to kick it back to.
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
So on the 20 to 21-hour monitoring for ambient air as programmed, how do you make sure that you're, that you catch the whole 24-hour cycle at least sometime in case?
Sure.
Your emissions vary with.
And so the way that we've decided to accomplish that, so that we're not running quality control checks at the same time every day, basically, we're getting up. Yeah, so the way that I sequence the program, it bumps the start time for the first quality control check an hour each day. So eventually, you know, you get all the hours represented. But, but yes, three to four hours, and those are together, the, the quality control runs together. Next day, it'll just bump up an hour for its start time. Does that answer your question?
Yes. I just have one question. I remember when you, your coworker started working on this. This is rather a new piece of equipment and so forth. So I guess the manufacturer at the time really couldn't share a lot of information. I get you guys really went out and did the work themselves, get this to, to the place where it is right now. Is that true?
Yes, that's very good. Thanks, Brian.
Take credit, take credit. I'd like to commend you guys for the work here, you've done on this. This is outstanding.
Thank you.
And it's really, it's running a new pack of equipment, so.
And particularly for trying to use a.
Yeah.
Measuring.
Yeah, yeah.
So just want to briefly talk about some of the differences you see between the monthly board reports and the annual report. Obviously, the annual report has a longer averaging time. And so that's more of an apples-apples comparison, just like benchmark ambient concentrations that are used in the STAR program. As Andrea showed, her process in evaluating data quality has improved from the original board reports. It's just a lot like the criteria air quality reports. You're getting a very quick look at, at the data, but that data can change subsequent to further quality assurance. And so it's a more complete data set. And there's a lot of detailed background and explanations in the annual report that, that really lays out a lot of the things we're talking about here today and some of the, the genesis of the project and then some of the ongoing efforts. And then on those data reports, you'll see an ambient data. And then on those data reports, you'll see an ambient data summary, which is what is actually been measured with the auto GC. And then you'll see that compared in the table with benchmark ambient concentrations that are a foundation for the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program. And the BAC for a carcinogen or a BACC is the concentration of attack that represents an additional cancer risk of one in a million over a lifetime. And I believe that's 70-year span, 24 hours a day is what that number is based on. And then over an annual basis. The BAC in the table for noncarcinogenic effects or the BAC NC is the concentration of a toxic air contaminant pattern blow, which no adverse effects are expected. So those are derived numbers based on many, many health studies. And we compare those because they've been around for a good while in the STAR program with what we're at now actually monitoring. And for some more comparison of the data to some other benchmarks, I'll pass it over to Steve.
Hello, I'm Steve Bravetti, Compliance Enforcement Manager. So now that we've got all these numbers, how do we use them? What do we look at? So in the past, in 2000, 2001, the district EPA, Kentucky DAQ, West Louisville Air Toxins Study, and U of L had what's called the West Louisville Air Toxins Study. They went around for a year with the canisters. They got numbers that were decided to leave too high. And we developed the STAR program based on that. So in the middle column, you can see the numbers that were reported for some of the compounds of interest. And then we've compared those to what we've got out of the auto GC now. We've seen a 96% decrease in the category of one toxic air contaminants, which was the top contaminants of concern that were in that West Louisville Air Toxins Study, and an 80% reduction in all types. So when the STAR program passed, the companies had to make modifications to their facilities, move line, you know, move production of some chemicals out, put in new control devices, change formulations. And this technology is allowing us to see the results of those, that program.
Sure. Thank you, Steve. So in addition to what comparing to the West Louisville Air Toxics study tells us, we knew that one other thing that residents and other folks would be curious about is how kind of the area that we're monitoring in compares to some other areas. Of course, we'll be answering that going forward with the Algonquin Parkway Station compared to the Cannon's Lane Station. But for now, we wanted to kind of take a look at some other monitoring stations throughout the country that are also monitoring for air toxics and just give kind of some information so that people can kind of read through it. This is a part of our report. If you're going to get something out of it, I recommend taking some time with it. There's not many like quick conclusions you can make. But with the help of people in our permitting section, we found sites throughout the country from areas with a range of population size, area type. What I mean by that is like the reason for which the monitors were cited. Some of these are really large cities compared to Louisville, near very large industrial hubs. Some of them are in similar sized cities in residential areas. So we just wanted to provide some context. What, what do air toxics concentrations look like in different types of areas? So we, as you can see, we had charts in the report like that. APZ, APCD's site compared to a few other sites, we have it listed by pollutant. You'll see I didn't really name the location, the city of the site in the chart. We were being a little careful. We don't want people to think this is a direct comparison between, say, Louisville and Atlanta or Louisville and Detroit, which are both where those sites are located. Because it's really, you know, there's a lot of different considerations that go into where these were cited. Ours is a maximum impact site for Rubber Town. Like I said, some are just in a residential neighborhood in other cities. So it's not a direct city-to-city comparison. We just want to provide some context for how these types of areas compare. You can go on to the next slide. I've done kind of exactly what I just said, trying not to give any of some basic comparisons of the cities. These are the pollutants that were kind of measured in all different cities. Worth noting, the, most of them use the method that Billy talked about earlier, which is canister sampling once every six or once every 12 days. Houston is the only other one that uses an auto GC similar to ours, but they are only collecting PAMs compounds and sharing them in this manner. So not all of the same ones. As you take a look at this, if you look through the slideshow later, somewhere like Calvert City, Kentucky, that is a site that is cited specifically to measure a source of vinyl chloride and the impact of that source. So you can see it's higher in vinyl chloride, but the population size and a lot, there are no other, like a few other sources and the population size is way lower than Louisville. So you can see some of the other compounds are way lower. Somewhere like Philadelphia or Houston, those are both cited to capture the emissions from very large industrial hubs in cities that are quite a bit larger than Louisville. So you'll see that there are some significant, there are some compounds that are significantly higher than here. There are some that are comparable. And you look at like Atlanta, Detroit, those are cited mostly residential areas with near some sources. And the Milwaukee source is one that's basically entirely in a residential area. So each in the report, each is linked to the Google Maps location of that monitoring site. So like I said, if you want to get something out of this area of the report, I'd recommend taking a pretty deep dive at it. It's, it's kind of interesting once you get that look. So let's hear any questions. That's it on that part. I'll give it back to Rachel.
Can I just give one question?
Absolutely.
Bill, I'd say be the first to answer. One of the advantages of the auto GC is, is that you have readings every hour, basically. So I just want to ask you if you looked at any of that data and what are some interesting things to see? And do you plan to show us any of that data?
Sure, we'd be glad to show you. Andrea takes a look at the data, daily, weekly, monthly, in different forms. Anything that, you know, is a certain threshold that is higher than it normally is, we discuss that as a group. We bring in management and engineering and just talk about that, what that might mean. Also, some, as we gather more data, we're going to try and look at, is there any specific, you know, diurnal patterns that we see? And if that's related to any, any particular thing. There's been a few instances where we've seen some spikes of data with a couple of compounds. And we know those compounds are emitted together by, you know, maybe a particular facility only. And so we were able to, you know, kind of figure out, see if their process is going okay. So there's a lot of instances like that. And as we, as we get further along in analyzing the data, we'd be glad to have some presentations and show some trends on that.
Good.
Well, I'm impressed. It's very good. One other question more to ask. You've got all this data. Do, what is your confidence level that you, with your data? Did you run analysis on the data, the confidence level, accuracy?
Well, we, we measure for accuracy with the standards that are provided. And we use a lot of the, as a model for our quality assurance program.
Right.
We use the National Quality Assurance Project Plan that was generated for the PAMs project. And so we've tailored that specifically to what we do. I mean, we've expanded it as we were looking for some additional compounds. And so that's added a layer of.
Confidence.
Well, yes, it's added a layer of confidence and another layer of difficulty for Andrea. But it's necessary to make sure that, that we feel confident in what we're looking at is to have multiple very expensive standards run through the system and just to verify those measurement quality objectives laid out in the, in the Quality Assurance Project Plan. That's a huge document. I'm glad to pass it along to you. You're having a trouble going to sleep then.
This, this is not really a simple technology. I commend you and your coworkers for all this work that you've done. And sure, it wasn't easy.
Chairman Hilton.
The idea and then pass it along to.
Chairman Hilton, as, those are great questions, and I really appreciate you all asking those. You know, one of the benefits of being here at this conference is the opportunity to have conversations with our colleagues. And in fact, I had lunch with one yesterday and I had breakfast with another this morning, where what we talked about was the fact that in our work, we've had the tendency in the past to be isolated or siloed within our expertise. And so they're in air toxics monitoring programs that are part of a state agency. They are part of an air monitoring group within a state agency. For us, this is an agency responsibility. We rely on our air monitoring staff to do this excellent work. Then we share it in a cross-functional way across the enterprise. When we have spikes, we get an email to management team members that a spike has been detected. And then we move in to determine, can we find the source of that spike? Some of the board members may remember that we identified a spike from an unknown source a few years ago when we had winds out of the west, I'm sorry, winds out of the north and high water in the Ohio River. And it was 1300 to dying, and we're still unsure of that source. So collectively and collaboratively, we respond to those spikes. We pulled in our partners from the Kentucky Division of Waste Management, US EPA, and others in that instance. But each month, a cross-functional team of APCD professionals meet. It's a standing group of managers and a rotating group of air pollution control professionals who meet with the air monitoring program to look at the data. What we're looking for is trends. Are we seeing something that when we look through that annual average at the STAR program would cause concern? So we need to take a measure now to intervene. Is there an excess emission that may have occurred that we can help Andrea see in her data? And so this to me is one of the best things that we've done in our program to pull us together as air pollution control professionals to focus on a problem that is all our responsibility. And again, I'm speaking tomorrow. I plan to hit on this hard. This is all of our responsibility. It is not a program here or an operation there. It's our work, and it really is key. Air toxics are local. This is different than ozone, which has a regional component. It's different than particulate matter that may be coming in from miles away. Air toxics are local. This is our community. These are our neighbors. This is our work, and I'm extraordinarily proud of everyone here. In particular, because as Billy and everyone have explained, we know more about our complex airshed. We know more about our STAR program. We also know that we're going to know a whole lot more about ozone formation. And from an environmental justice and equity standpoint, we'll also be able to compare emissions in West Louisville to a more suburban setting in Louisville. We believe that that will help not only APCD evaluate its air toxics program, but our other partners, health researchers, land use planners, and other policymakers make good decisions. So with that, are there other questions that the board would like to have answered?
Any questions? Well, I have a question, comment, may not directly related. And I don't know what's bad, because I just saw this this morning, was the report by the American Lung Association that identified pollutants across the country and talked about the most, you know, air polluted areas. And you can put your zip code in and it pops up, quote Louisville for example, which I did. And I didn't get that deep into it, but it gave us, it gives grades.
Right.
It gave an F, for example, on ozone. We meet the criteria. Which is odd. It has Cs on the M 2.5, which were, if you look at the graphs that are presented, we, we meet those criteria, and I forget the third one. That, that strikes me as odd. I don't know.
So.
You guys have seen that?
With respect to that report, and we can go into more detail in that, in next month's board meeting and help shed some light on that. But it's nice to have a system where you get to choose the grading curve, but that is really based on our air quality index. And so that is measuring and grading us on a scale related to when we have a moderate day for ozone or PM, for example. So the good news is with that report, even though the letter grades may be disappointing, is it really reflects amazingly clean air across much of the country. I stand by that. Their grading has gotten harsher, but boy, the air has gotten cleaner in most places. One of our colleagues from California spoke yesterday. He's from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And he just flat out acknowledged they have the worst air quality in the nation. And they, they do, but they have about one, if they were a state in that one air quality management district, they would be the fifth largest state in the nation. And so because there are still areas that have severe air pollution issues, criteria pollutant issues, that report from the American Lung Association is incredibly instructive and very helpful. And again, I'll be happy to, to dig into that for you next month, Mr. Sullivan. So we'll put that on the list, too.
Well, it strikes me, excuse me, it strikes me from a PR perspective. When you pop it up on Apple News and you go, it's Fs, and that creates a general public's concern, seems to me, that may be misinterpreted.
Ms. Anderson, I will, I think I've got that on tape. So if I can find that tape, I'll let you see it. But he's right.
Okay.
Global an F.
All right, well, very good. You know, to be candid, our work is the continual work in progress. And that's just another way to look at it, so.
Okay. Any other questions for board members? If not, I'd like to thank everyone that took part in our toxic monitoring report. It's an excellent report. Keep up the good work. Moving on, our quality data that was submitted electronically to all the board members, any questions around the, our types of data report? Our quality and our toxic report, no questions? What about the enforcement status report? Any questions on that?
I was curious what the status of the, the older SWIP stuff is. I understand that, you know, that came up in the hearing recently. I was curious if there's any progress in that.
Mr. Wen, could you provide some details on that for me, please?
Yes, there's a draft, a report order that's been circulated to SWIP, and they're currently reviewing it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we hope to get that, the earliest probably on June.
Okay.
For me. Thank you.
Access emission reporting, questions on that one? Complaint investigation. Mentioned earlier to Steve, I'd like the page seven where you have a summary of all the ongoing investigations on the complaint investigation status. That's, that's very helpful. Thank you. Lon Karen, any questions on that? If not, I'd like to thank everyone who took part in the today's meeting. This meeting is adjourned until Wednesday, May 17th, 2023 at 10:00 AM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.